4:00 PM, we are in the city chambers. And I call the City Commission Regular Meeting to order. For roll call, Commissioners present are myself, Mayor White, Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Langdon, Vice Mayor Stokes, and Commissioner Emrich is absent for this meeting, but we do have a quorum. Hold on. Also present, wait a minute, that's right, we skipped all that, I'm sorry because we're not using that. Also present, we have City Manager Fletcher, Assistant City Attorney Ryan, City Clerk Faust, Police Chief Garrison, yes? Who's back there?
Back there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Can't see that far. And Fire Chief Titus, I know he's in the House, thank you so much. To lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to call on Krista Fowler.
Resources Manager, Ms. Deborah Hope, who's going to come up and introduce the lucky few.
For the record, Deborah Hope is the Resources Manager? No?
No.
I see that.
Okay, sorry for the technical difficulties. In the City Manager's Office, we have Sherri Austin, Disaster Cost Recovery Coordinator. If you are present, please stand up and be acknowledged by the Commission. Thank you. John Chikatano, Business and Research Analyst, Economic Development. In Development Services, we have Nicole Manabusin, Development Tech. And Paulina Weaver, Development Tech. And Joshua Preston, Code Enforcement Inspector. In Finance, we have Gina Sweet, Account Specialist. In Human Resources, we have Gary Passick, Senior Talent Acquisition Partner. In Parks, Carlos Toledo, Athletic Field Specialist II. And Police, Gary Gamond, Police Officer. And Antonia Washington, Police Officer. In Public Works, we have William Bellon, Building Tech III. Sean Thorp Morton, Inventory Specialist. And Jackson Vega, Equipment Operator. In Utilities, we have Christopher Marrero, Inventory Specialist. And Jason Palmer, Water Treatment Plant Training. Very good. But we want to welcome you, and I'm confident that your experience and enthusiasm will serve the city well in your new roles with the city. Welcome to the City of Northport. All right, thank you. We're going to now move on to Item Four, which is Proclamations and Recognitions. So I'm just going to invite the Commissioners to step down. Okay, the first one is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do we have anybody here? Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and continuing problem in our society affecting over three million children annually nationwide. And whereas there is no test of a society more important than the status and treatment of its children. And whereas the Child Protection Center works to prevent child abuse and to protect and treat children affected by child abuse, with the hope of creating a community in which every child is free and safe from child abuse, and urge all citizens to be aware of and involved with the local and national programs which provide ongoing protection of our children. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2024, as Child Abuse Prevention Month, given by the City of Northport, Florida, on its day. There you go.
Hi, just want to say thank you on behalf of the clients and the staff that we serve at the Child Protection Center. If you want to know more about what we do, you can visit our website at cpc sarasota.org. And thank you again for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you.
Sure.
Alrighty. Whereas Florida Volunteer Month and National Volunteer Week was established in April as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas volunteerism strengthens communities, improves social problems, and enhances the overall quality of life for all citizens, including children, seniors, those who are disabled, impoverished, imprisoned, homeless, physically or mentally ill, or otherwise in need of assistance. And whereas volunteering changes the lives of volunteers in a positive way, increasing self-confidence, self-esteem, and physical well-being, offering the chance to meet new friends and offering opportunities to learn new skills and abilities. And whereas volunteerism is proven to have a positive influence on businesses that are socially responsible, increasing employee morale, loyalty, and teamwork, and building goodwill towards the company. And whereas nonprofits, charities, community and faith-based groups, schools and national service programs in the City of Northport have joined together with state and local governments in celebration and praise of volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 and the week of April 14 through April 20, 2024, as Florida Volunteer Month and National Volunteer Week.
Thank you, sir. Josh Taylor with the Police Department. We will take this for all volunteers everywhere, but I'm joined with Susan Wagner, who heads the Volunteer Department, kind of for the city. And what an unbelievable job they do. Obviously, there's a lot of volunteers out there in the community for other types of organizations, but right here at the City of Northport, we right now have 28 volunteers with seven more looking to come onboard. Just since October 1st, they've done almost 1,000 hours of work for the City of Northport. Cost savings, cost savings. So we're really appreciative of them and the work that they do. They often go unnoticed, so this is fantastic. And Susan, the work that you do to help us, help them, help us, is fantastic. So thank you so much, and thank you to all our volunteers. You need departments out there, need a volunteer, we've got somebody for you.
And they're amazing people. I mean, they're even interesting to talk to because their experience is living here in Northport for so many years, they can give us some information and help with insight on different things that we're working on. So feel free to reach out, you can email me, or you can email Josh.
Email Susan.
Lots of talent. We have lots of talent that are volunteers here in our city, so take advantage. Thank you.
And we really thank you to the Commission, the City Manager's Office for allowing them to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you. Very good. Yeah. National public safety. Yeah.
Do you have anybody from my team? Let's see.
Telecommunications.
Right. Yeah, or telecommunications.
Are you saying telecommunications?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Oh. Oh. Good thing. I'm very grateful for you. Yeah. I appreciate you. What do you sign? What do you sign?
Alrighty. How we doing? Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Northport Police Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Northport Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 14 through April 20, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Public speaking is not my forte. First, I would like to thank the Commission for the proclamation honoring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Being in the spotlight is not something I like, but being able to showcase the awesome telecommunicators is something that I love. Did you know, combined, we have approximately 192 years of experience in our call center? Standing here today, we make up 90 of those total years. It is truly hard to put into words what we do on a daily basis that would allow you to feel or recognize what it is like in the day of a telecommunicator. So I will leave you with this post I recently read. While we may not be the ones racing to the scene of a burglary in progress or a traffic crash with injuries, embodying tranquility in the midst of chaos is who we are. A skilled dispatcher makes a challenging task appear effortless. We serve as the enablers, the directors of the Emergency Response Ensemble. We organize, assist, and guarantee that every aspect of a crisis converges harmoniously. Although we may not frequently receive accolades, the significance of our efforts is indisputable. We are the vital link, the composed presence in the tempest, the unsung heroes who empower others to save the day. We know our why, we live it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your churches? Yeah, you can always.
Is Liz Blessing out there? Liz? Oh, okay, she has a stand-in. All right. Come on down, Stephen. Come on. Oh, both of you. Okay. All right, maybe you haven't guessed what this award's going to be, but I'd like to do a little preview before I give the proclamation. When I was in fourth grade, and I was born and raised in New Jersey, I have to disclaim that, yes, but we had to memorize the poem Trees by Joyce Kilmer because I lived right outside of New Brunswick, New Jersey, which is where he was from. So I wanted to start with that. "I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree." Yes, if you know the words, join in. Yes. "A tree whose hungry mouth is pressed against the earth-sweet flowing breast; a tree that looks at God all day and lifts its leafy arms to pray; a tree that may in summer wear a nest of robins in her hair; upon whose bosom snow has lain, who intimately lives with rain. Poems are made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree." So, that will lead us into what you're up here for, and what this month is all about. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as National Arbor Day.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, for this honor. This proclamation represents the passion of our wonderful community and the effort towards preserving one of our most precious natural resources, trees. On behalf of our new Natural Resources Division and myself, I want to thank you all. And the passion and spirit of Northport towards making a positive difference for our trees means a lot to me and to our team, and we wanted to thank you once again.
All right, I'm wearing this special little tag here, so I'd like to call Krista Fowler up, and anybody else who wants to accompany her for this proclamation. This is for International Bat Day. We should have that music, right?
We should.
And, 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 okay. All right. Whereas bats provide numerous important ecological services that contribute substantially to the economy of the United States by protecting American forests and agriculture from crop-damaging insects and such other pests, and by providing, no, I'm sorry, and other such pests, I'm sorry, and by providing the fundamental benefit of pollination. And whereas recent bat population losses from white nose syndrome, habitat loss, and other factors require attention to ensure the sustainability of our food production systems and protect environmental and human health. And whereas it is critically important to continue federal, state, and city efforts, including developing new public-private partnerships and increasing citizen engagement to promote the health of bat populations, increase the quality and quantity of bat roosting and foraging habitat, and help restore bat populations to healthy levels. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 17, 2024, as International Bat Day. And Krista Fowler is exactly, has done everything that I just read, bringing awareness to the importance of bats, providing for their roosting. Did you want to say something about your project? Yes.
So I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. So this is part of my gold award that I'm doing as a Girl Scout. The gold award is the highest award a Girl Scout can earn in her scouting journey. So you had to put forth like 80 hours of work, and mine is centered around bats and awareness and appreciation of them, because I've noticed a lot of people just don't really see all their importance, which I can't cover all of their importance right now. But I do have like these business cards and pamphlets, if you are curious about them. And I have a website that I made, QR code to it. So if you guys are interested in checking that out and kind of getting more information on my project itself and bats, you can come check out me and the website.
And I just want to add, I've known Krista and her sister, Skylah, stand up, stand up, so everybody can see you. Yeah. These two have been involved in environmental issues and projects long before it became like the thing to do. With me, when, I don't even remember how old Skylah was, but she was like seven when we did our first project together, so I am so proud of what you've accomplished and what you're doing for our bat population. So thank you for doing that. Okay? Anybody? Anyone here for Family Abduction Awareness Day? Okay, then I will hand it over to City Clerk for mailing. Thank you. Do you want me to?
Well, the next one, I think, is for Presentation of National Convict and Appreciation. And then we have the Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation.
Why don't you come on down? We have someone who wanted to kick this off by saying a few words.
All right, Shelby Mendelssohn, Recreation Manager. So through Northport Parks and Recreation, as you all know, we host several community events throughout the year. And today, I have some very, very special people that are huge contributors to those events. They make such a difference in providing these offerings to our community, and we really just wanted to acknowledge them, being that April is Volunteer Appreciation Month. So I would like to read a few words about each, and then I'll ask you to come up and to receive your certificate. Awaken Church has provided support at our annual egg hunt events for several years. At the 2023 Egg Hunts, Awaken provided 46 volunteers to assist with event preparations, ranging from egg laying to basket distribution. Their team has proven to be consistent and dependable over each year, and we are so thankful for their support.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to partner with the city and to be able to just come and be a part of what you guys were already doing, and just share the love of Jesus and get to know people in this community.
The Imagine School of Northport Young Marines are an asset to several city events. From 2022 to 2023, they provided 315 volunteer hours. They assisted with vendor load-in at Freedom Festival, provided Kid Zone Support at Point Ceta, and served as course monitors at our Rock and Run and Roll 5K.
First of all, we want to thank Parks and Recreation, and of course, Mayor and City Commission. It's, on behalf of Imagine School at Northport, it is all about enriching the lives of young people. And with our Young Marine Unit, that's the majority of what you were speaking where that happens. And I want to introduce our leaders here with Young Marines. It's Colonel Warkowski, Corporal Raposa, do a lot of legwork in getting our youth out and into the community, but we certainly couldn't do it without partnership with you all. So thank you, and I'd like to say a few words as well.
Thank you as well. It's been an honor and a privilege, and we look forward to our continued partnership working with the community.
All right, and last but certainly not least, Joan and Ed Morgan are avid Parks and Recreation supporters. The dynamic pair worked directly with staff on the 2023 Rock and Run and Roll 5K, from the beginning planning stages to vendor coordination and day-of race registration and assistance. This event, that served over 120 participants, would not have been a success without them. Thank you.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure, obviously. I mean, the City of Northport means a lot to both of us. And I want to take this time to just say a special word about the Easter egg hunt and everything else. What a tremendous, tremendous event again. And I'll tell you why, and I've said this to many, it just made me feel so good. You looked out there, and we've been here 51 years, and frankly, I felt like I knew nobody. There's so many new people, you know? But it still had the small-town feel, like we cared and we connected. And thank you all, thank everybody for all you do. And thank you all, thank everybody for all you do. Our last proclamation is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Spark, do we have anybody from Spark here? Last call for anybody from Spark? All right. All right, do we have any public comment? Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that I love these monthly proclamations and the fact that we do them on the first Thursday of the month and that we honor and recognize the contributions that our citizens are making, bring awareness to certain issues, to put it out there because I think it's really important because that makes them even more important when people realize, oh, it's this month, or it's that month, or this particular day. So I really love the fact that the City of Northport has done this for quite some time and hopefully will continue to do this. So with that, if there's nothing else, it is 4:33, and I adjourn this meeting.